Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is November 5, 2025, calling the special meeting Town Council adjutant to order at 6:30. Council Clerk Melendez.
Council Board of Ed.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Pacino.
Here.
Rusk.
Here.
Mayor Franco.
I am here.
Thank you.
Up next, we're going to salute the flag.
Let's salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, up next, you don't have any recognitions this evening, nor public hearings, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we're moving on to receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to two minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertaining to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting, please sign up at the meeting before the call to order. You may also register to speak in person in advance by emailing council@groton-ct.gov no later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting.
Play information?
Your question.
Sure. So when reviewing my agenda packet, I noticed that, you know, well, there was a newly added item where, you know, it was two minutes, it went from five minutes to two minutes. But it also then, when you moved it from five minutes to two minutes-
My question?
-on public comment, I'm getting there, thank you, it also stated that there would be no, a cap on a 30-minute amount of time that people can speak, and now it's gone this meeting. So I'm just curious to what-
No, it's been gone for a while. Thank you. Up first, we have Catherine Pratt.
I didn't ask my question. So just to dismiss me and not give me a chance to answer my question-
You have asked your question.
I have not finished my question. May I ask my question? My question is, at what point was it removed because we were never notified? We never notified when it came on, and then it just mysteriously disappears in sunsets? And there's been no discussion? No announcement to the community?
Now you're going into debate, so your question is, when did it, was it removed? It was, has been noticed on the agenda.
Since when?
And all the agendas that you have received, you can go back and look. Up first is Catherine Pratt. Just a moment. Mr. Bur, we have something up on the screen. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at 75 Front Street in Noank Village. Members of the Groton Town Council, good evening. As a longtime resident of Noank, concerned with the integrity of our historic village, I would like to align my remarks with those of Kevin Blacker in his letter to the Town Council of October 28 regarding the Main Street Reconstruction Project. In a written update emailed by the Noank Fire District to village residents in August, town officials assured us that current plans were not cast in stone, and there would be another public meeting, so it was surprising to see the sudden appearance of the project consultant's presentation on the agenda for the October 28 Committee of the Hall and the associated Community Investment Fund grant application on the agenda for tonight's meeting of the Town Council for a possible vote. As far as I can tell, the overwhelming majority of Noank residents welcome the necessary repairs to the existing roads, sidewalks, and drainage system. But many of us have concerns about the historic appropriateness of certain additional project features. I am concerned, for example, about the historic appropriateness of the proposal to make Main Street a modern roadway of uniform width with designated travel lanes separated by a double yellow center line. The village of Noank is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and its charming winding streets were one of the historic qualities that originally qualified it. I am also having trouble visualizing the proposed new sidewalk starting at Church Street and going down Store Hill to Front Street. It can be very difficult for a layperson to read and understand the multi-layered architectural drawings. I respectfully urge the Town Council to please arrange a public meeting or a public hearing dedicated to the Main Street Reconstruction Project.
Thank you.
I wish the public can speak. Thank you.
Up next is Kristen Earls.
Good evening. Kristen Earls, 144 Brook Street, Groton. Reading a letter that was emailed, I think, to all the councilors on behalf of John Michioni, who couldn't be here tonight. To the newly elected members of the Groton Town Council, my name is John Michioni. I live at 144 Brook Street in Groton. By way of background, I have 40-plus years' experience working with businesses and not-for-profits from an economic and strategic perspective. I'm traveling and cannot make this council meeting in person this evening. Congratulations to the newly elected council on your adding to the Democratic wave that swept the country yesterday. This is indeed a hopeful time. Your choice of mayor is critically important at this time. At the local level, we have many challenges. We need leadership with strong economic experience to help Groton continue to move in a healthy and sustainable economic direction. The potential loss of federal funds and likely state funds, which may be redirected to make up for federal losses at the state level, presents an especially challenging time. Groton needs a fair-minded leader with a deep economic understanding of how the finances of the town work. We need someone who has experience creating a financial growth strategy and who can bring a critical eye to the proposed budget, seeking opportunities for savings while supporting our critical needs. David McBride fits that bill, in my view. His longtime service as Director of Finance for the City of New London and his even-handed style in council deliberations make him ideally suited to the job. One of the key sources of increased revenue will be the sale of closed school properties. He has been the Chair of the Town's Property Reuse Committee and knows that area well. While the council has many able people, David McBride's extensive financial experience and proven track record make him uniquely qualified in that role. Thank you for your consideration and your service.
Thank you. Up next is Jen Ser.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Town Manager. I wasn't going to come tonight because I assumed you've all heard enough from me during this campaign. But when I got home last night and opened some news notifications, all I saw were huge Democratic victories all over the country, which the news called "a blue wave." It was thrilling because I realized that all Democratic victory in Groton was a shining part of this extraordinary blue wave. So a heartfelt congratulations to all of you for your hard work, especially to our new councilors who won lots of votes. I don't go out very much, but every time I did, it seemed like I'd see one of them, Kevin Fitzgerald and David Good. But they're younger than we are, so it's sort of undissable. I'd also like to express my appreciation to Natalie Billings, who turns out is one of the greatest Democratic fighters in the country. She has really fought to keep Democratic power in Groton. And when I took like a bird's-eye view of it, I realized how important that was at this time in our history. So I'm extending a really heartfelt thank you and a heartfelt congratulations to everybody for doing such an amazing job. I'd just like to add, the Democrats in the U.S. have learned how to fight for our republic by dissenting. The 7 million people who took to the streets to protest were dissenting. That is what won us our strength back and allowed us all these victories last night, and probably lots more victories going forward. So I'd just like to put in a good word for dissent in the Town Council.
Thank you.
We take, just one second, one more sentence.
Your time has expired.
We tend to take it personally, and we shouldn't.
Thank you.
It's what keeps our democracy strong.
Your time has expired.
So please allow the dissent here, and let's not all get aggravated about it. Thank you.
Up next is Ian Thomas.
Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. Full disclosure, Board of Ed member and spouse of Councilor Bordelon. So to pick up on the thought of my friend Jen there earlier, you know, congratulations to all the incumbents that are here that did win their seats again. But, you know, moving forward, let's be mindful of what the messages are coming, what the messages are saying that's coming from the community. As Democrats, you know, we have celebrated the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So moving forward, I look forward for the new council coming in. It's another chance for another fresh start. And so I would encourage the incoming council and those, you know, new ones, new people that are watching at home, hopefully, to take up a rule that requires all elected councilors to sit on at least one standing committee. Take personality out of it and make it about principle. The Board of Ed has a rule like this, the RTM has a rule like this. It's high time the council adopts such an inclusive mentality. Let's put our money where our mouth is, stand by the principles that we see rising up across the country. You know, there was a blue wave, so let's take note of that. But also, it's important to note votes, vote totals, as well. And Council McBride, Council Bordelon were the two highest vote-getters once again, and I think that's a message coming from the community of what sort of governance they'd like to see moving forward. What do they have in common? They had in common the property reuse committee-
Your time has expired.
And those civil discourses that occurred there. So-
Thank you. Up next is Paul Bates.
Paul Bates, 47 Church Street. Mayor members, the council, Town Manager, thank you all for guiding the town so well. I request that the council meet with the community after the next meeting that the community has with the Public Works and the consultant. Thirty or so years ago, Walter Blacker had Horace Newberry, the town engineer at the time, draw up a plan for Main Street. With a little pushback, Big Walter, but the ultimate politician, gave the bottom drawer veto to that plan. Speaking with Greg Schneider shortly before his retirement, he said that when he first came to Groton, the first project he wanted to attend to was Main Street. Recently, the town has repaved many of the side streets throughout the fire district. Most everybody agrees that Main Street still is in the worst condition of all the roads in the town of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Alyssa Wright.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Wright. I live at 59 Main Street in Noank, in the house where I grew up. Noank Village, as an entity, is listed as a historic district on the National Register of Historic Places. The register inventory highlights the dense collection of homes built between 1840 and 1910, and the detail of their architectural embellishment reflecting several architectural periods, Greek Revival, Gothic, and Eastlake styles. It also highlights the varied topography and the coastal viewscapes from its narrow, winding streets, small lanes, and courts on which this interesting array, architectural array of homes are sighted. The cumulative effect of all these elements, it notes, evokes something of the pattern of life in a small fishing and shipbuilding village. The totality, as it were, is something greater than the sum of its parts. The proposed redesign and realignment of Main Street contradicts the historical character of the village. It would impose a cookie-cutter design of the 21st century and will impact these historical elements that work together to create the essence of the charm of Noank. There needs to be a public meeting with residents of the village on this new iteration of the streetscape scheme, streetscape scheme, clearly setting forth the need, its justification, the outcomes-
Thank you.
And the proposed benefits.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Natalie Billings.
Good evening. Natalie Burfoot-Billing, Groton, Connecticut. I'm a very happy person tonight. I've been happy all day. You all know I'm Chair of the Groton Democrats, and we had a good night last night. All of you who've agreed to continue to serve were reelected, and I want to congratulate you and thank you for being willing to sit up here and do this job because I know how hard it is. I hope that you take last night as a validation of the work you've done and the values you stand for, and that the voters appreciate it. I do want to speak for a moment about the question of picking mayor, because during the campaign, there were lots of comments about that, and we heard a speaker tonight. I just want to say, you know, picking the mayor is something only all of you can do. I might have an opinion, other citizens might have an opinion. But having served on the council, I know well that the best person to be mayor is the person who's earned your confidence, is the person that you're all comfortable with, is the person who can lead your meetings. If you choose David McBride, terrific, I think the world of David. But I also think the world of Juliet Parker and Bruce Jones and many others of you. So only you know who's earned your trust, who's earned your confidence, who you can talk with, who you can work things out with. And I encourage you to trust yourselves about that and know that we, the citizens, are not the right people to pick who should be mayor, and it isn't about votes. Lastly, I'm here to say thank you to Mayor Franco. I know how much of your life you've given to Groton. I know the sacrifices you've made, and I thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Andre Baumgartner.
Good evening, Council. Andre Baumgartner, 162 Daniel Barandevan Mystic, and your State Representative for the 41st District. It's great to be with you all this evening. Congratulations to each and every one of you for your reelection, and to our two departing councilors. Council Rusk, congratulations on your victory as Groton City Mayor, wishing you the best of luck in your new role and looking forward to working with you and Mayor Franco as well. Thank you for your service to this community. We serve together on the Town Council, and I wish you and your family nothing but the best in your future. Earlier this evening, I attended a meeting in Noank. It was a very well-attended meeting. Both Councilors McBride, Councilors Bordelon, and Councilors Merritt were in attendance. It was a good mix of opinions regarding this project, and I say that because, like all projects in town, you know, sometimes you'll have some folks in favor of a project or in opposition. But at this stage, it's still in the early phases of the planning process. Last week, I know you all deliberated on the Community Investment Fund priority list, and appreciate your due diligence and efforts on that. I've been in constant communication with Representative Gieske and Senator Summers with respect to prioritizing those projects within our district. And I just would note that I stand in strong alignment with the folks who have voiced their interest in having a public hearing to really go over some of those loose ends or questions that some of those community members have. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention our incredible Public Works Director, Greg Hanover, who, in my experience, has been nothing but transparent and very, just always, you know, having an open door for our community with respect to these projects. So I would just ask that you continue to engage the community as we're closing out this process. It really has been a three-year planning process, and appreciate your due diligence as well, and good to see you, Town Manager. All right, thank you.
Up next, Justin Wyatt.
Congratulations to all of you, by the way. Justin Wyatt, 12 Pearl Street. I'm talking about the Noank Reconstruction Project, and I don't know that much about it except how it kind of directly affects my property, but a couple of questions I had. When I watched the October 28 meeting, I heard over and over from people who were designing it, they used the term "safety" over and over. And is there any statistics or data that shows that it is now unsafe the way it is? Living in Noank, I'm not aware of people being hit by cars, close kids' bicycles, or anything like that, especially down Main Street. The second part with the sidewalks, and once again, it's hard to decipher, but if you were to put a sidewalk to go down, you clearly can't go that angle on a regular sidewalk. There would have to be steps, platforms, steps, platforms, which now is creating railings, and it's more of a modernized look. I didn't know if that went into consideration. And then, second part is, that also affects Pearl Street, which, the first house on the right, when you turn down Pearl Street, is where I live, and they're proposing one sidewalk right there, just the length of my house, not running down Pearl Street. Now, if anybody has been over there, or if these developers own the tape measure, that's the biggest bottleneck in Noank, where the big boats come down, where the cars are coming both ways. You always have to stop. A car has to kind of sneak through. And I know the stats on that, there's a lot of cars that get sideswiped. When you put a sidewalk, and they're proposing removing my 80-year-old fence and then going out two feet into the road, you're creating more of a hazard than you are actually not shortening the road. I guess if there's going to be a walkway, you want it kind of on the same plane as the asphalt, like a cobblestone, that if the cars had to go over there, you're not affecting anybody or kids on bikes.
Up next, Kevin Blacker.
Kevin Blacker, 11 Church Street, Noank. Here to request that you take action, that the council take action tonight to schedule a public hearing for the Noank Main Street Reconstruction in front of this council. I have a letter here that was signed by 38 people asking that the council, you know, asking to request the council for this meeting as soon as possible, I think in the interest of just how important it is to schedule this as soon as you're possible able to. And I'll only speak for myself in saying that holding the meeting here in front of the council would allow us to access your judgment, your wisdom, get your, to hear the information in an unbiased form directly from the people where you're running the meeting and can control the impartiality, where it's not a paid consultant, Pierce Wright, who I don't think highly of, who I am not impressed with, the job that they're doing for the oversight of the practical problems and the harm to the village of Noank that their current plan will cause. So I'm not sure if it's possible to leave this letter, which was signed by people at that meeting, or not, but thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. All right, up next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Council Parker, would you like to take that?
Make a motion to accept-
Point of order.
Any questions?
Usually we ask if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak.
It's in our agenda that says you need to sign up before the meeting starts.
Again, that's another new rule change.
Council Parker.
Make a motion to accept 2025-4, the special trust fund contributions for November 2025, and the 2025-997, October 7, 2025, and October 14, 2025, meeting minutes. I still move.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Rusk. Anybody see any changes that need to make in the minutes? All right, seeing Noank, we're going to take a vote on the consent calendar, 2025-4-8, as well as 2025-997. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. All right, up next is communication reports other than committee reports. We are starting with Town Councilors. Council Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share?
Other than I attended the meeting down at Palmer's tonight on the reconstruction of Main Street in Noank.
Thank you. Council Bordelon.
Oh, thank you. I also attended the meeting down in Noank at Palmer's. I think it was nicely attended, and I appreciate the diverse, you know, thoughts and opinions that, you know, the organic nature of that. So I also appreciate the folks that have come to speak tonight. I did receive some, you know, verbal communication about people's concerns of the streetscape of Noank, as well as some letters and phone calls. So I just want to address that. Also, I just, you know, want to continue to address my concern for the openness and transparency part of our agenda. I used to read, we had five minutes, I used to say that, you know, well, I guess the cap came off. They threw a 30-minute random cap on there, no more than 30 minutes total, where people could only speak for two minutes, and 15 people. And at the end, they used to say, is anyone else like to add anything? Maybe you showed up late, right? We're all working. That's got removed. So I just hope in the new council that we can take away the stifled, choking feeling of discussion away. We're here to serve the community. We are elected by the people to do the people's work. That's why I'm here. And if we are limiting our one communication a month, we're not doing the people's work, in my opinion. And what are we afraid of? What are we running from? Why are we cutting our times down? That is the most important part of the agenda to me, once a month. So, again, I hope with the new council that things do change. So, again, I hope with the new council that things do change. Congratulations to everybody up here and to, you know, this new city mayor and everybody else that's moving forward. I wish everyone the best. But with that, I will say, I've been a long-serving councillor up here, and I'm not putting my name forward for mayor because I'm constantly overlooked. As it stands right now, I can't even get on a standing committee. I've returned, this is my fourth term, returning as a high-vote getter, top one or two, and I don't get the respect up here. I hope in the new term, with new people up here and a new mayor, this will change. It has to change. You should want it to change. Nowhere do we go at our jobs where people can be automatically excluded just because you don't like them, or told that I don't work well, or I can't, we don't, no one wants to work with you. I worked fine with David McBride on the Property Use Committee and many others, and we had no problem. So that blanket statement and not giving me a fair, equitable access is just disgusting. So with that, do I think I'm qualified as well to possibly be the mayor? Absolutely. My name didn't get discussed tonight by our Chair of our Democratic Committee, and it also wasn't discussed, I ran my own committee as a Democratic candidate because of the primary from four years ago. I'm hoping to move forward. I've been trying to move forward, but yet I get resistance, rule changes, attacks on my laptop, and many other things. Let's move forward together.
Your time has expired.
And I'm excited for new faces.
Your time has expired.
And I hope that we can move this council forward.
Your time has expired. You no longer have the floor.
In a much more respectful and open way.
You're out of order.
Thank you.
Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass at this time.
Councilor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the Groton residents who came out to vote yesterday. We saw great numbers of people come out, and I want to say congratulations to everybody who was elected in both the town and the city. And that being said, tonight will be my last meeting. It has truly been an honor to serve with all of you for the past two years, and in the town for six years, and in the city four years before that. So I want to say thank you to everybody here. I want to say thank you to Mr. Burt, to our city clerk and office, and to all the residents. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for believing in us and helping, letting us help you move forward in this town. It's truly been an honor to serve here.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Up next, Council Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank everybody who came out and voted yesterday in the municipal election and voted for the councilors, Board of Ed, and RTM candidates. We had a 28.5% voter turnout, which I believe is an all-time high for an municipal election in Groton, so congratulations to all the residents for stepping up and giving us a great election. I also felt there was a vote of confidence from our residents for what we've been able to accomplish over the last couple of years and a direction to keep moving forward. Items that were mentioned, I think that we're proud of, that we have done, items like the solar land project, low-solar landfill project, which is added to our tax base, making progress on our vacant school properties, balancing development with open space, our new bike pump track. One of the items I think most of us up here, all of us up here, are most proud of is the Sutton Park renovations, which are underway, which will add a great, really upgrade a great facility in the town. Our new pickleball courts and hockey rink upgrades, which I saw last night standing outside of the library. The hockey rink was filled with Groton residents having a game under the lights. It was fantastic. Progress on my veteran services program, and I'll mention that we are really looking for a veteran to step up for either be a veteran services rep or a veteran services officer. We have, as a council, moved forward on that, and we're just having trouble trying to find someone to fulfill this position, so anybody that's interested, should be a veteran, would be wonderful. We passed a referendum last night on the Fitch High School football field, track, and bleachers, so congratulations on that. We're moving that project forward. And I also want to thank and congratulate Councilor Rusk on winning the mayorship of the city. You're going to be great at it. We will miss you here. I have loved serving with you, and thank you for your friendship and being part of the team here, so it's great. It's a great day for Groton, for Democrats, and for democracy, so thank you.
Council McBride.
Thank you. I would like to also thank the residents for their support in yesterday's election and to allow me to serve another two years. I'd also like to congratulate the Fitch Falcons football team on their big win last Friday and improving to 4-3. They are now in seventh place in the Class MM, which means if they continue to play well, they'll make the state playoffs. Good luck this Friday against a tough West Haven team. I also attended the meeting earlier tonight in Noink with the residents who were discussing the Main Street reconstruction project and providing their thoughts regarding it and the desire for a public hearing, which I strongly support. I'd like to thank the Athletic Fields Task Force for all of their dedication and hard work over the years of addressing the field issues and congratulating them on the successful approval of Phase 1 of the completion of the football field, the track, the ADA-compliant bleachers, new bathrooms, and a snack shack at Fitch High School. I've also been asked by many if I would be willing to become the next mayor if the next council chooses me, because last election, there was a misunderstanding as to my desire. The answer is yes, I would be extremely interested in this very important role, and as such, I have reached out to each council member-elect to meet with them over the next week to discuss why I believe my past experiences have prepared me very well to assume the position of mayor. More to follow over that in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would also like to extend my thanks to all the residents who came out last night and voted. It was a large field with many different points of views, and the validation of this town council was very apparent, not only with the major projects accomplished over the last two years, but also the referendum. Loud and clear that people agreed with a phased-in process, willing to put up the money, and I appreciate it, and my future Falcon son will appreciate it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone that voted. Thank you to the clerk's office, for both clerks, as well as the registrars and the volunteers that were working during, not only during early election yesterday, but also for early voting. It was a lot of work for all, so I thank you from, as a citizen point of view, that thank you. It was very welcome. I too have reached out to some councilors to put my name in a hat, and again, it's a council's choice of who they want to pick to run the meetings as best as they can. I want to say congratulations again to Councilor Rusk on winning, and we will be working, everybody will be working together as a team, so you're not that far away. Again, thank you to the public. Thank you to everyone who worked hard, and also thank you to the other running mates, the independents and Republicans. It takes a lot to do, and we all did the best we can. The people spoke, and again, thank you guys for putting yourselves out there.
Point of information. Your question.
Through the mayor, I just had a question. I just wanted to make sure I heard, did she state that Councilor Parker, that she contacted some people to talk about being mayor? Is that what I heard?
I think you can talk with her after the meeting about that.
I just haven't been contacted yet.
This is like communications, and this is communications. I don't think there are any specific questions regarding it.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify how, I want to make sure I heard her correctly, because I didn't receive the message.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay, so congratulations to all the elected and reelected people last night, and congratulations, Council Rusk, who will soon be Mayor Rusk of the city. I wish you well, and it's going to be a big job for you, and I know you're up for the task, so best wishes.
Thank you.
Our community turned out in high numbers and overwhelmingly supported the Athletic Field referendum and voted in Democratic officials as a majority. This tells me the community wants more of the great changes and initiatives they've seen in the past at least eight years, because we've gotten things done, such as we've passed a lot of grants, we've restructured a pilot funding to the fire districts fairly, we've put in new schools, we put out the referendum for the Phase 1 athletic fields, we put in a pump track, pickleball courts with lights, we supported our community, there was infrastructure improvements, sustainability and resiliency initiatives, renovated the hockey rink with lights, lights at the middle school fields, we put in a new T-ball and a 50-70 baseball field, we've built bridges, literally are building bridges, renovated Sutton Park and the skate park, opened a community center, we put in a solar field at the transfer station, expanded walking paths with lights at aquatic plains, we put in pay-as-you-go paving instead of bonding and having to pay additional interest. We have empty schools that are going onto the tax rolls, we've enhanced our fund balance policy, and we've done responsible spending. We've also put in the police radio system onto the state system, and we've saved taxpayers millions of dollars. I mean, this is just to name a few that I could think of before the meeting, and I think our community wants us to continue. So I'm happy for all of you and our community, and I think Groton has spoken, and their voice was loud and clear. All right, let's move on to Clerk of the Council.
I just want to congratulate all the electives and reelected. Congratulations, you guys, and thank you, Mayor Franco, for your time, your service, and your dedication. As far as absentee ballots during this election, we issued 303 absentee ballots, and by end of close yesterday, 8:00 p.m., we have received 263. Nothing else to pass.
Point of information. Just a question. Thank you for your hard work on this. I know I was in contact, and, you know, it was not a pointing of the finger, but my question was, you know, there was concern with the link to the state website that when a person out of town clicks the state website, if you live in the city, you only get the town ballot. Is there anything that's going to move forward, or is it a software issue for the city or that you know of? Like, is it?
Well, I wasn't aware of the issue until October 22 at the Groton Democratic Town Meeting. I went on the 23rd, filled through everything, all the applications, contacted the city clerk with anyone that had been applied for an application, and gave her that information. At that time, there had been eight people, and after that, two more, so a total of 10. There are calls and talking with the state to see what can be done.
Thank you for that. I do appreciate it. I think this is very important, you know, and I think it will, even if they can't do the software right away, a disclaimer, which I spoke to State Rep Baumgartner and State Rep Gajewski, even something on there, once you complete that state link.
Point of order.
Absentee ballot.
Your question?
I thought this was a question.
It is.
Anyways, answer.
At this point, you are allowed to ask questions of the clerk.
Okay.
You are allowed to ask questions of the clerk.
My thought was is that it would be helpful that if it doesn't get fixed right away by the next election, that at least a disclaimer would say, by submitting this, you're only getting the town ballot, not your subdivision. But I thank you for your efforts on that, and, you know, I know it was kind of shocking. I've never voted absentee ballot, I'll be honest, and helping my son at college, you know, exercise his right, and he's up there, and he's like excited, and he's like, Mom, I got the ballot, and there's only one. And so I know, I was like, I don't know, this is interesting. So thank.
You're welcome. The disclaimer on the state side will have to come from the state. I know that the city clerk and I did put it on our own website, and going forward, we will continue to do that.
Thank you. And it's definitely something I learned, too. Thank you.
All right, up next, Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting.
Okay, all I have is next meeting is next Wednesday, the 12th at 7:00 p.m. at 3:55.
Thank you. All right, Town Manager Burt.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to everyone who won, and thank you for your service. Let's see here. Chair Washington from the Board of Ed requested that we have the Board of, the operational reviewer come visit a meeting of the Board of Ed just to explain the different findings, and I've given the authorization to the operational reviewer, so I'll be reaching back out to Chair Washington to acknowledge her request. Athletic fields, I've started touching base with the athletic director, Parks and Rec Director, Public Works Director, and Architect, and I'm our financial advisor on the bonds for next steps. There's some things that need to be done before we're really ready to issue the bonds, which may require some cash flow, so we're trying to figure that out and see how we proceed, but we are working on that. And in terms of Noink, just want to make it clear that applying for a grant does not lock you into the, to what the current proposal is. There is going to be another public meeting that Public Works will be scheduling soon, as well as there'll be a public hearing here, so that will be coming. We'll try to get that scheduled sooner rather than later, and I think that's it.
Okay. Council Bordelone.
I just want to be clear, so you are going to schedule a public hearing for the Noink?
Yes, but a public meeting before, and then a public hearing.
Yeah, and then a public hearing. Perfect. And.
I'll try to get those lot dates locked in quickly.
Great. Thank you for listening to the community. And any other updates on the Seawall debacle?
I've never received any information.
And, I think that's all I have right now. Yeah, that's all I have.
I have a quick question, because Noink's on my mind. Whatever happened, do we finish off the Noink, the issues down there by the water, whether it was parking issues, is that all resolved and settled?
Yeah, there's nothing else to be done on that at this point, yeah.
Thank you. All right, up next is Committee of the Whole, Mayor Franco. So at this point, I would like to ask the council, I'd like to take a consensus to change our Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, November 10, and move it to Wednesday, November 11.
12.
I'm sorry, the 12th. From the 10th to the 12th. The city is having their swearing-in ceremony on the 10th, and I have heard from many councilors that they would like to attend, and I've talked to Mr. Burt, and he said he can make himself available on Wednesday, the 12th. So I'd like a consensus to see if we would like to move forward and change that date. It doesn't have to be a vote, just a simple consensus.
Point of information.
Your question.
I think it would be important, if possible, that we add the reason, I mean, some people might not be calculating to the 11th as Veterans Day.
Yes.
So that's why it was on the Monday, not the Tuesday, and now we're trying to move it to Wednesday? Is that the thought?
Well, we didn't, we had it scheduled for Monday, the 10th. That was on our calendar.
Yeah.
We had done that last year in, like, November.
In preparation for Veterans Day.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anybody opposed to this? Okay, seeing nobody opposed, I think, Mr. Burt, you have directions, so we can change that meeting to Wednesday, the 12th. Okay? All right, moving on, personal unappointments. Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be discussing that in new business. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bordelone.
I just wanted to check the status of any applications that are currently pending.
None that I know of. None that I know of. Is that correct?
Are you looking for a particular one?
I just think it's under that report. It would be nice, like, as a bookkeeping thing, to know what you've received, that's all.
Have you received anything yet from the clerk's office?
I have not received anything. Nothing.
It won't be out yet.
So there's nothing yet? Do you, you're in possession of some that they haven't made it over to?
There won't be some going on. Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, up next, rules. Chair Parker. No meeting, no report. Okay, up next, public safety. Chair Rusk.
No meeting, no report.
All right, we are now on to new business. 2025-966-1, various appointments, reappointments, resolution. I believe it's on page, yep, page 16. Councilor Jones, would you like to take that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-966, various appointments and reappointments. A resolution making the following appointments, reappointments to authorized agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees, ABCs, resolve that the town council appoint the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. A reappointment for Thomas McLaughlin, the Shellfish Commission, an appointment as an alternate, James Katamis, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, appointment full, Thomas Leary. and Zoning Commission, appointment full, Thomas Leary, to the Groton Housing Authority, an appointment alternate to Peter McGinnis, for the Shellfish Commission. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Good.
Yes. So these that have moved forward, I thank everyone for their willingness to serve. I know there's still a bunch of openings on a lot of different commissions and boards throughout the town. So if you're out there and interested, please apply. But my, my question is, were there any other applications that were not considered? Were these only ones? Is it?
All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to vote on 2025-966-1, Various Appointments/Reappointments Resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is 2025-937-1, Nature Everywhere Grant Resolution. This is on page 17. And Counselor Good, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-937, Nature Everywhere Grant Resolution. Just a result or all the way?
You could do the result.
I move that the Town Council authorizes the Groton Public Schools Board of Education to apply for and accept a grant for $50,000 for the Nature Everywhere Communities Catalytic Grant and to refer the item to the RTM for rules 6, that, six, sorry, 653. So...
Second. Moved by Good, seconded by Bordaline. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-937, Nature Everywhere Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-291-1, the Groton Ambulance Lease Extension 2025. This is in our packet on page 18. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Thank you. 2025-291, Groton Ambulance Lease Extension 2025 Resolution. Just a result, sufficient?
That's fine.
Resolve that the Town Council approves a lease extension for property at 217 Newtown Road for a term ending September 30th, 2028, with Groton Ambulance Association with a yearly lease amount of $1.
So moved, I mean, second.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Jones. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-291-1, Groton Ambulance Lease Extension 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is 2025-933-1, Sutton Park Improvements Additional Funding. This is on page 19 of our packet. Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Item 2025-933, Sutton Park Improvement Additional Funding, Resolve that the Town Council authorizes an additional $160,000 from the town's Capital Reserve Fund to the Sutton Park CIP to removal and replacement, it's supposed to be for removal, and replacement of the skate park bowl and for the addition of the second base basketball court and refer to the RTM per rule 6.5.3.
Second. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Parker. All right, not seeing any hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-933-1, Sutton Park Improvements Additional Funding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Just because we're going through so quickly through this, I just want the public to know that we have already discussed these in full in our Committee of the Whole meetings and had full deliberations on all of this, and they have passed there to make it to this meeting, so we can pass them in full at our Town Council. Up next is 2025-982-1, Community Investment Fund Grant Application. This is on, this is going to be beginning on our page 20, but we actually have a revised edition that was set at our table. So Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that?
Just a point of information.
Your question.
Before, because I'm a big stickler about things that show up on the day of, can you just highlight what the changes were? Because when I read it originally several days ago, I read the original form.
Can we put the motion on the floor and then we will, we can take your question?
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino, would you like to do that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-982, Community Investment Fund Grant Application Resolution, Resolved by the Town, pardon, excuse me, Resolved by the Groton Town Council, One, that is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by section 112 of Public Act 21-111. Two, that the filing of the applications of state financial assistance in the CIF by the Town of Groton, in the amount not to exceed $6,250,000, is hereby approved and that John Burt, Town Manager, is directed to execute and file such applications with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to, excuse me, to execute, to execute and, and assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative for the Town of Groton. I so move.
Second. All right, moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk. So it seems to me the difference is the C-Wall in our packet had said $9.8 million, and that is now at $3 million. Is that correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
Thank you. And $3 million is what was passed at the Cow. It might have just been a title on the packet.
Yes.
Counselor Bordaline.
So again, these funds that states here for the C-Wall and Main Street, mainly the Main Street, this doesn't guarantee exactly what that, you know, the person who presented the dreamscape renderings, that doesn't mean that by applying for this, we're not held to anything on that application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because I am concerned that some state funding, when you apply, sometimes there has, there's certain things that it has to be for. And so, just for the community, I want to make sure and for the next group of people that will be up here, that approving this number is financial only in nature. The presentation that was given to us, that's a whole other topic. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. We're going to take a vote on 2025-982-1, Community Investment Fund Grant Application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-993-1, TCPA Committee, 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar.
I just have a point of information.
This is on, just a moment, please. This is on page 22 of our packet.
My quick, my quick question, really quick. Economic and community development. Does the C-Wall an economic? Does it fall under that? I just want to make sure, I just, that kind of...
We're no longer on that topic.
Yeah. Well, I'll send it in an email. It just seems like, is a C-Wall economic and community development? I just want to make sure, does that?
Thank you. Up next is on page 22. Counselor Mary, would you like to take that one?
Resolution approving the 2026 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Schedule for 2026 as follows. Tuesday, January 20th, Tuesday, February 17th, Tuesday, March 17th, Tuesday, April 21st, Tuesday, May 19th, Tuesday, June 16th, Tuesday, July 21st, Tuesday, August 18th, Tuesday, September 15th, Tuesday, October 20th, Tuesday, November 17th, and Tuesday, December 15th, 2026. All meetings begin at 5:30 p.m. in the Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road on the third Tuesday of each month. Meetings can be held in person only, virtual only, or a combination of the two. I so move.
Second. Moved by Mayor, it's going to be Bordaline. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-993-1, TCPA Committee 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-992-1, Town Council Committee of the Whole, 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. Counselor Parker, that one's on you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the 2026 Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Council Committee Meeting, Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting Schedule for 2026 as follows. Tuesday, January 13th, Tuesday, January 27th, Tuesday, February 10th, Tuesday, February 24th, Tuesday, March 10th, Tuesday, March 24th, Tuesday, April 14th, Tuesday, April 28th, Tuesday, May 12th, Tuesday, May 26th, Tuesday, June 9th, Tuesday, June 23rd, Tuesday, July 14th, Tuesday, July 28th, Monday, August 10th, due to primary election, Tuesday, August 25th, Tuesday, September 8th, Tuesday, September 22nd, Tuesday, October 13th, Tuesday, October 27th, Tuesday, November 10th, Tuesday, November 24th, Tuesday, December 8th. All meetings begin at 6:30 p.m. in Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, except for in August. Meetings can be held in person only, virtual only, or a combination of the two. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Bordaline. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-992-1, Town Council Committee of the Whole, 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-991-1, Town Council 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. This in our packet begins on page 25. Counselor Good, would you like to take that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-991, Town Council 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. Resol, be it resolved that the Town Council approves regular meeting schedule for 2026 as follows. Tuesday, January 6, 2026, Tuesday, February 3, Tuesday, March 3, Tuesday, April 7, Tuesday, May 5, Tuesday, June 2, Tuesday, July 7, Tuesday, August 4, Tuesday, September 1, Tuesday, October 6, Wednesday, November 4, due to the midterm election, Tuesday, December 1. All meetings begin at 6:30 in the Community Room 1, Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road on the first Tuesday of each month, month, except for in November. Meetings can be held in person only, virtual only, or a combination of the two. So moved.
Second. Moved by Good, seconded by Parker. All right, not seeing any hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-991-1, Town Council 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
I don't hear a second. We're on to our open items agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss about the open item agenda? Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that the Library Funding Committee will be November 13th. We are still having our follow-up meetings discussing the two libraries, Bill Memorial Library and Mystic No Ink Library. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick question to ask you about that. Is there any progress being made and are you close to a resolution, you think?
I believe so.
All right, good to know. Thanks for the update. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager, I mentioned in Counselor comments about the veterinary services position. Can you just give an update of your efforts or where we are with that?
Yeah, I reached out a few times to the, and I forget what town we went to.
Summers?
Summers, yeah. To, I've not heard back from them because there was a, we were looking at whether we could contract for services with them. We may have to move on to next options soon, so I'll, I'll be in touch on that.
All right, thank you. And can you just talk through the mayor, to the town manager, just a little bit? I believe there's a MOU, is that correct, on the?
For Mary Morrison.
For Mary Morrison?
Yes. I've updated the MOU after some discussions with Superintendent Austin. She's got what I hope to be the final version. She's said she would get with Chair Washington to schedule when it would come before the Board of Ed. So just, it's in their court right now.
So we're, we're moving in a forward direction.
Yes, yes, certainly.
That's encouraging. Fantastic. Great, thank you.
Counselor Mary.
Yes, looking at this list, Route 117, Route 184 intersection, does that involve the roundabout that was presented to us a while back?
This, this isn't the roundabout that was presented, but it is a roundabout, yes. So two different, it's not the same thing presented. They're looking right now at whether it's feasible to even do one here, because this is about our highest traffic accident location in town. And so DOT is reviewing it.
I would weigh that against the fact of a lot of these roundabouts that go in involve eminent domain. And I think the state did not discuss that with us when they made the present, presentation here. It was a good presentation and it hit upon every aspect except eminent domain. And I think that's important.
Can I clarify? Was the, the roundabout was for Allen Street?
Yes.
Or was it for the one?
Yes, I understand there's very little of any impact.
Can you repeat yourself, because we were speaking simultaneously?
For Allen Street, I, my understanding is very little of any type of eminent domain involved, but there could be a small, and first of all, you try to buy it. So, you know, I think there's maybe a couple tiny pieces they need to get a hold of, but I don't anticipate it being a big issue.
But the 117 hasn't come to us, right?
No, it has not. It would, what it might be is, it's been asked about here. It hasn't been presented, but it's been asked about. So I will reach out again to the DOT. It's in their queue though.
Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to the town manager. I remember I called you and asked you about the possibility of, of them doing, instead of two roundabouts, they're doing what they call peanut.
Right.
What was, what was the answer you got back from?
They basically rejected that design. They said it does not work there. It would cause more accidents. Yeah. I don't know, I don't remember the, sharing details at this point. It's been a couple months.
Thank you. We haven't talked about 117 before.
Counselor McBride.
I'm looking at Stormwater for you. The status is empty. It wasn't going on the 10th agenda. It just looks blank.
2027.
I will say, I do think it's worth looking at.
Maybe next council.
Totally blank. Sorry, thank you.
Counselor Russ.
Just, if I may, address Counselor Mary's question about 117 and 184. It was something that had been brought up a number of times in the community. And so I had brought it to Town Manager Burt and also when they came to speak about the roundabout, I had asked them about the possibility of looking at that intersection. asked them about the possibility of looking at that intersection, because there's a lot of backup when people are going north and southbound, because you can't, there's only one lane in each direction, so you can't turn onto 184 if you are going north or south. And it backs up traffic all the way down. So I'd asked them about that, not specifically about a roundabout, but just to look at that. So that is where that initially had brought, been brought up.
And just to add, we had pursued a more traditional change there to try to improve safety, and that did not go anywhere. So now we're focusing on the roundabout.
I do understand, however, there will be at least four property owners that could be affected by that, and that should be addressed in advance, so they have an opportunity to voice their opinions.
And when they report back to me, the DOT, I'm sure they'll mention that. And if there's much impact, I doubt they'll say they're going to be willing to pursue it.
So have we heard anything about the Carter Peace Garden?
No.
Has that, nothing has come back? Okay.
And Lisa has reached out several times. No reply.
Okay, I've reached out as well. And I know you have, it was discussed earlier about an MOU. There were two issues. There was one with the school over on Parks on the West Side, and then there was one with a private housing area, as well as maybe housing. How, can you give us a general overview of what's...
Sure, I already updated on the Mary Morrison, on the, on the MOU. The, for Balfour Beatty, they agreed to allow many of their playgrounds to be open to the public and for us to post those on, under our list of public parks. And nothing further yet with Fairview. That's the other location we're, that would be something that would need to be constructed, so a bit of a longer range type of thing.
Well, thank you for working on that. That's been a long time coming. Counselor Russ, you want to go with...
I just wanted to jump back to my original question about you, just for clarification. So the original proposal at 117 and 184 had been to ultra stoplights?
Yes.
That was a no-go?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other, any other hands here.
Second?
Moved by Rusk. Seconded by Boardaline. All right, adjournment made by Rusk, seconded by Boardaline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. That means unanimous night on every topic. Once again, it is 7:43, and we are adjourned.